So if you can't with public comments from my department, you provide free access to that.
Can you turn off your mic? Can you turn it off?
Yeah.
You did that work. Public comments from my department allow free access to the comments.
Our first speaker is Stephen Hegerdus, Southern.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments to the State Board of Ed here after January 19th board meeting. My name is Stephen Hegerdus, and I'm the current president of the Connecticut chapter of the American Association of Colleges for Teacher Education, AACT Connecticut, and I'm also the dean of the College of Education at Southern Connecticut State University. AACT Connecticut is an association of 13 public and private colleges and universities here in Connecticut that provide educator preparation programs to students interested in the education profession. We promote and strongly support high-quality teaching and education in the state schools and are advocates for robust educational leadership. On behalf of the AACT Connecticut, we want to say thank you to the Board of Ed, Commissioner Shailene Russell Tucker, the Department of Education, and especially to those individuals with whom many of us from AACT Connecticut work with regularly. We're in a new year, and we face new and ongoing challenges in education. We wish to reassure the board that our faculty and staff are committed to offering teacher and administrative preparation programs through flexible modalities, and we continue to work closely with our school district partners, respecting the protocols in place and guidelines related to public health and safety. AACT Connecticut has been meeting with state legislators, sharing our perspectives on the recruitment and retention of a diverse educator workforce, and supporting the continuing professional needs of our teachers. We are planning a statewide conference workshop with faculty, students, teachers, and district leaders to what we aspire to be a Connecticut learning community, to share resources and best practices, addressing the teaching and learning needs of our children in schools today. We're also working with colleagues in other states to develop proposals for our elected officials here in Connecticut on how we can offset some of the costs that our student teachers face in preparing to be a teacher. Such financial burdens can prevent students from entering into the teaching profession and can easily approach a couple of thousand dollars in testing and certification fees in addition to their regular tuition. We would like our state to offset some of these costs. Finally, on behalf of my institution, Southern Connecticut State University, I'm pleased that you will be reviewing and endorsing the continuing approval of our educator preparation programs today, following the recent accreditation results of the Council for the Accreditation of Educator Preparation, CAPE, which resulted in zero conditions and zero areas of improvement. I am very proud of this result and the hard work of my colleagues, students at Southern Connecticut State University. We look forward to our ongoing collaboration with the Department, the Board, and other organizations in Connecticut as we all continually strive to make Connecticut's education system to be the best. Thank you, and please continue to feel free to reach out to me and to our association on issues of mutual interest. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Morgan Campbell.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Morgan Campbell, and I'm reading an email on behalf of Christina Steiner. I'm sorry I can't be there in person with you all today. However, I have hit a breaking point, and I feel like it's my time for my voice to be heard at a state rather than local level. There has been enough finger pointing and deflecting, and now it's time for all of you to take some actionable results on behalf of the taxpayers and parents in the state of Connecticut. I pulled my kindergartner out of public school in August due to the state-issued mask mandate. Despite WHO and many medical professionals saying kids six and under should not wear masks for prolonged periods of time, our governor decided that his power and the CDC's recommendation should override the WHO. Then the CDC began publishing studies that our governor quoted about how effective masks are in schools. However, a few weeks ago, those were all questioned for multiple reasons. To date, there has been no study provided or metric by the CDC for how truly effective masks in a school setting have been. Our ZPH cites the CDC, yet the CDC's study has been questioned and really holds no water any longer. So again, what are the metrics or studies showing mask efficacy in a school setting? Now, the same subset of parents, educators, and government officials around the country trying to push for universal mask wearing in schools are trying to push for schools to go remote due to the Omicron variant. If masks work so well, why are the scare tactics over remote learning? Oh, that's right, because cloth masks don't work. That's why every hospital in our state won't even allow cloth masks when you go to see a patient any longer. Our kids don't need to be in masks at all. Even Anthony Fauci is now starting to the state that measures for child hospitalizations are being overcounted. Omicron is highly transmissible, so transmissible that it's estimated that 20% of our state has it right now. Yet hospitalizations and deaths are not going up at even remotely the same levels as they did with Delta when 4% to 5% of the state had it. This is the same data coming out of South Africa and other countries that have already experienced this wave. At this point, we're pretty much trying to stop the spread of what is a common cold for most, rather than just focusing on the eldest and sickened population. So again, I will ask, when does the madness stop? Since June, I've been questioning what our metrics would be for getting masks off of kids. In August, Fauci assured us this would be short-term, particularly since no one knew what the long-term impacts of mask wearing are, particularly for our youngest and most impacted age group. I implore all of you to start speaking up for our kids. There's multiple school boards across the state that have stood up and recommended policy changes to the governor. These kids need to stay in school. They need to take the masks off, and they need to resume life normally. They need to be kids, and they need their parents to be the ones making decisions about what is best for their well-being and not the government.
I think I'm saying that last name is definitely Alfonso, Genesis Alfonso.
Good morning.
Could you state your name, please?
Genesis Alfonso.
Oh.
Um, I was prepared to speak this morning, but um, I don't know how much more I need to keep showing up and explaining that this is not helping the children. This is actually worsening their situation. I mean, from what I'm seeing, their social reaction, their social interactions are being disrupted. Their health is not really getting any better from it. They're afraid of each other. They're afraid of touching each other or being, you know, playing with each other because of the social distancing. If they have a mask on their face, they can't even see each other smile. They can't even see if their friend is sad. So I just think that, I don't think it should be a mandate to take them off for everyone. If it's your choice to keep it on because you truly believe that it's best for your child, then sure, you know, let them wear them. But it's unnecessary to enforce this on the children whose parents don't believe it's best for them. And I've looked into scientific proof that it's not. So, you know, that's all I have to say.
Patricia Cavallosi. Reminder to the people in the public that masks must be worn at all times in this building.
Have you noticed how comical the quarantine and mask recommendations have become in our state? First it's 14 days, then 10 days, then five days, but only for a certain group of vax. But wait, that doesn't apply to the unvaxxed. Then it was athletes, but only athletes who were vaxxed. Can we all say segregation? This has gone to a point where downright ridiculous, the ineptness of this department of public health. Especially when it has already been proven by the CDC that cloth masks show very little is no protection at all. However, they recommend N95 now. Do you realize that the mask is considered a medical device, approved only under emergency authorization, and N95 cannot be worn by children? Do you realize that an N95 is a contraindicated against best medical practice for people that have lung disorders such as asthma, COPD, cystic fibrosis? Given that I'm a little confused as to why N95 masks will be given to school systems for distribution, and why are we speaking about things being distributed in the school systems, the test kits, we are told, will be distributed to the school systems for use? So have you decided on an opt-in or opt-out form that needs to go home to the parents first since it is their decision? As I've mentioned prior, a mask is an experimental medical device for COVID and only authorized for emergency use at this time. These kits are the same, experimental, not fully studied and remodeled as a 1231, for their inefficiencies and disparities. These little experiments being trusted upon our children should in no way, shape, or form be brought to the schools for distribution home. This is a public health initiative and should stay away from our public schools, period. Guidelines were established by each state on their own. Was there public contact sought, which was one of the conditions, to receive the extra funds? In Connecticut, did not have to include wearing masks as the guideline to receive these funds. Many states did not and received it. So doing so in Connecticut, you've enslaved our children for greed. Where are the funds going? Why weren't these filtration systems immediately studied or placed into our school systems to help combat the spread? Or is this the filtration system that our children are to be blinded with? For God's sake, teachers are opening windows to allow for fresh air in the rooms because of paranoia, while our kids sit there freezing. They are eating lunch out in the cold out of teacher paranoia. And on the subject of teachers, unions, wasn't that a cute little statement made by the Connecticut teachers supporting a safe reopening? I'm wearing black in solidarity because they want our Connecticut schools to go virtual. What? And I wonder if these subtle letters sent to the schools that shift and good represented threatening them of liability, if they don't comply, none of which was legal. It's time for Connecticut to get back to actually teaching our children. You sit here and you allow these unions to call the shots for our children. The teacher union bully you, so you bully our kids. Is that how it goes? You all want it to be in positions that you're in now. So how about putting your big boy, oh, excuse me, gender choice pants on and do your job? Do what's right for our children. It's time to put an end to Lamont's emergency executive power tricks. It's time to give the power back to our three branches, and it's time to get control back to our local school districts where it belongs. They know what's best for their towns. They should have autonomy in their own districts. This is placing undue stress on the entire school system in the state, but more importantly, it's putting undue stress and long-lasting affliction on the children of the state of Connecticut and the parents of parents. Enough is enough.
Good morning. The governor has declared a state of emergency in Connecticut, and the Department of Health and Department of Ed are requiring children and staff to wear masks in school, ignoring proven significant adverse impacts to health and development, especially from long-term use. But conveniently, this is not considered an air quality emergency in school. Current state law gives the Department of Public Health the option to make funding available if there is a certified school indoor air quality emergency with conditions that present a substantial and imminent adverse health risk that requires remediation. All of the major airlines have considered COVID to be an air quality emergency and immediately improve ventilation on all of their airplanes. But it seems our administration has set a price tag on our children's and staff's health and has mandated masks with much less efficacy instead of improving ventilation. Is the thought that masks will help with mold and other contaminants in our schools too? So Lamont administration surveyed Connecticut schools last winter to assess the ventilation systems and presence of contaminants, and the director of school construction has cited that there isn't enough staff to summarize the survey, and he can't say when the final report of responses will be complete. That sounds convenient. How is this not a priority? The CDC, the U.S. Department of Ed, the Harvard School of Public Health, the Johns Hopkins School of Public Health, and the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers all highly value and recommend ventilation as the most important COVID mitigant. In fact, S.R. Funds and American Rescue Plan Fund preferentially directed use toward ventilation improvements. Governor Lamont is seeking to extend his executive orders yet again, which in a circular way empowers you to implement a school mask mandate. Why does the State Department of Ed not entrust local districts to make COVID-related safety decisions when it comes to masks, but it does defer to local school districts on the implementation of other safety and educational measures? What did the governor's emergency powers get us during this Omicron surge we are in? I see the highest positivity rate since the beginning of the pandemic, the highest number of cases in schools, including mostly the vaccinated staff, a lack of testing capacity, and a shortage of teachers and healthcare workers. And just this week, the CDC conceded that cloth masks are ineffective in preventing the transmission of COVID-19. So will you all speak up and agree it's time to end the school mask mandate, or will you just further enable the sweeping of this under the rug like you have with the lack of air quality in our schools for many years? Your masking policy is the reason hundreds of preschoolers and elementary children are now academically and socially delayed, and hundreds more are suffering from social isolation-related mental issues. You were hired because you have proven your value to the quality of our children's education. Please focus on your actual purpose and leave the medical decisions to parents.
My name is Shereen Norton. I'm here today to read the comments for a teacher who can't be here today. Her name is Christina Corbello. Good morning, State Board of Education members. Thank you for reading my mail letter or listening to my letter being read by a member of the audience today. My name is Christina Corbello. I have been a teacher in the state of Connecticut for the last 18 years. I love my job. I love my district, and I love teaching. My love of teaching has not waned over the last two years of the pandemic through the obstacles in front of me. Those obstacles in front of me have continued to get higher and higher. I taught in person at school through the entire September 2020 through June 2021 school year, and I have taught in person through the September 21, 2021 present school year. You would think that these obstacles would weigh me down and make me less passionate and less enthusiastic about teaching, but in a strange way, it has been quite the opposite. These obstacles have made me into a stronger, more dynamic, more understanding, and more educated person in all aspects of my life. Like everyone else who has been intimately affected by the pandemic as I have been, I have reached my ultimate lows and risen up every time stronger and more determined than I was before. So has the pandemic affected me? Yes. But as an unvaccinated teacher, it has not made me weaker. It has made me stronger. In August 2021, I was horrified when Ned Lamont announced the teacher vaccine mandate. As an unvaccinated teacher, my world turned upside down by this announcement. However, I did not sit in the corner and cry as you might expect. I took action. I contacted all of my representatives. I contacted my school system for answers. I contacted the union for support. I contacted my insurance company for answers, and I did not stop there. I became an advocate for others as well. When the vaccine mandate was approved by the extension of Lamont's executive orders in September, I began a new crusade, which I want you to listen to very carefully because it highlights what I believe to be one of the largest problems we have in the state of Connecticut right now: a complete and total lack of communication. And let me say that again. A complete and total lack of communication. Let me explain. The data is given, this data is given with 100% truthfulness and 100% honesty on my part. From September 27, 2021 to today, I have typed, printed, and sent 12 letters by US Mail to Governor Lamont, and I have received zero responses. I have typed, printed, and sent 12 letters by US Mail to the Department of Public Health, and I have received zero responses. I have typed, printed, and sent 10 letters by US Mail to the Department of Labor, and I have received zero responses. Four letters to the Connecticut State Department of Education, zero responses. Three letters to Connecticut Education Association, I received one response. I am a law-abiding citizen of the state of Connecticut. I'm also an honest person, taught in person throughout the entire pandemic. I think she's making her point. You are a representative. You're not doing your job. You shall be fired. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, Susan Zapahansky. I'm the founder of Parents Choice Connecticut and Families for Freedom. We've been coming to these meetings now for three months. Very disappointed that last time we checked in on the meeting and we were told that it was going to be held at the LOB. We had hundreds of people who had taken time off of work to come to that meeting. Tuesday, we were told that it was canceled because you couldn't get us the LOB, and that's why you canceled it. Yet here we are in the same location. I don't understand why we couldn't have it there. That's disingenuous to the people who want to come out and make public communication. And unfortunately, as a result, you know, I don't understand why we're still here. So I find that very disheartening. And in a time when people are questioning the government, I think it's very important to maintain transparency. Telling us on Monday that it was going to be held at the LOB, and then on Tuesday, right before the meeting, sending us an email that it wasn't, it's unacceptable. We're here again because we are asking you to tell Lamont that we do not want the State Board of Education or the Department of Public Health calling the shots. We live in America. America is a place for limited government, not big government. All these decisions should be made at the local level. We do not want our legislators legislating mask mandates or vaccination mandates, and we will be definitely crusading people to vote on that specific agenda in 2022. This should not be a political issue. This is an issue of individual liberty. We are a country of individual liberty, not collectivism and not socialism. Therefore, we're asking again that you guys put pressure on Lamont, that you want to concentrate and focus on education and not on public health. I did attend the State Department of Education, Department of Public Health meeting last night, I mean, yesterday morning, excuse me, via Zoom. It's just laughable at the contradictions that are occurring in our school system. Five days for some, but if they can wear a mask, they can go back. But if they're in the state where they have a mask mandate, they don't have to wear a mask and they can go back. They are not required to test to go back, which is understandable because a test can test positive for 12 weeks. But then if you do test and you test positive, then you should stay home for another 10 days. This is what I heard yesterday. It's ridiculous. It's not about public health anymore. Everybody's going to get the coronavirus. We know that the vaccine has not worked to protect us from spreading or getting or spreading coronavirus. And once we figure that out, the thought of collectivism with regard to public health became moot. It's a moot point. So I'm asking again that you tell Lamont that you want to focus on education and get us back on track. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. You know, so as Susan just said, parents have been coming here for three months. This is my first one. I'm a Bristol resident. I've been to local Board of Education meetings in Bristol. Bristol has a superintendent, Dr. Kate Carbone, who has zero empathy for parents, which is frustrating. You know, you go to speak out on the local level, and it goes nowhere. Also, here we are. I want to start off with the positives. We're going to get a lot of negatives. Let's start off with the positives. My two boys, they're in school, second and fourth grade right now, in person where they belong. Thank God. So I thank you for that. I'm going to talk about a couple scenarios. I'm not going to get CDC statistics or any of that stuff. Couple real life scenarios that I've gotten feedback from my kids. Every day when they come home from school, I ask them, "How was your day?" I ask them about the conditions in school. "What about this? What about that?" And I talk about all kinds of things regarding the restrictions and implication of the restrictions and safety protocol and all that. Couple that really stick out to me. My fourth grade son tells me they have to sneak talk at lunch. They have to sit spaced out, and they're supposed to look forward while they eat, and they're not supposed to look over and talk to their buddies. It's getting really, really wild. You know, it's absurd. And then a few weeks ago, there was another situation in class, him again, fourth grade, that just pushed me to the edge where I said, "I can't sit back and be quiet any longer." He tells me, nothing bothered him. He came home and told me during snack time, his teacher required the student, or that's just a required, instructed the students to lower their mask, take a bite of their food, and raise the mask back up and keep chewing, and repeat that for every bite of their snack. This is just insane. I can't take it anymore. I don't know the teacher's mindset behind that. I did reach out to her. She said it was too cold that day to open the windows. I don't have any problem with open windows. The fresh air is a good thing. But that act of up and down the mask did it for me. I just can't sit back and be quiet any longer. That was, they're psychologically abusing our kids in school, and we can't take it anymore. You know, not everybody has the time to get up and come to these meetings, parents, you know. Not everybody has the audacity to come and speak in front of a group. Well, I can assure you, I can assure you, parents are fed up. They want the choice to mask their kids or not. You know, after two years of this, the mandates aren't working. They're just not. We know it. You know it. We're playing pretend. Let me ask you, please be honest with yourselves. When you go home and think about what I'm going to ask right now, what'd you guys do for Christmas? Did you celebrate with your friends and family? I hope you did. I hide these out there. You guys sat back and hid in your closets and sat in Zoom and, you know, ate your Christmas dinner or New Year's or whatever you do to celebrate with friends and family. I'm going to bet you didn't. Maybe something you didn't, and that's your choice, but the key word is choice, and that's what parents want. We've had enough. Oh, one more. One more. In Lebanon, our friends, they're dealing with their school district about the weight of their backpacks. In Lebanon, they're not allowed to use their lockers because kids congregate around lockers. So these four kids, middle schoolers, are carrying around 18-pound backpacks. That's another example of one of these real-world school issues that parents have had enough of. Thank you.
Lauren, I'm going to try and this last name, Berwaglis. I can't really read it. Lauren?
Hello, my name is Lauren Vernalia. I am also a Bristol resident. I would appreciate it, in fact, if everyone could actually look at me while I'm speaking because this is public comment. As I've been sitting there, you know, and that's fine if you've got notes to take, but I'm sure you have plenty of other time in your day to do that. So anyway, I don't have anything written. Typically, I come to these meetings with my nice little piece of paper all written out about exactly what I want to say, but I don't have that this time because I'm kind of done with that avenue. Yeah, basically, parents are done. This is all theatrics. That's what this is. Every single one of you, because I can guarantee y'all go out and do your thing wherever else you are when you're not in these buildings, and you don't have them on. And hey, if you want to wear two masks, like I see there's a couple people here who are doing that, great. That makes you feel safe. Wonderful. My children are miserable. My children always loved school, loved it. Now they hate it, hate it. I am a licensed clinical social worker by trade. I have been for over 18 years. So I do have the credentials to back up the fact that the mental health crisis that is happening in our children is far worse than this invisible little germ that everybody's freaked out about. Well, guess what? We had it at my house. And yes, I understand people died. I understand that. I understand there are still people dying, but they're not dying from COVID. They're dying from whatever comorbidities they had prior to or whatever. And these tests, they're bull, and we all know it. They test for every other Tom, Dick, and Harry thing that there is out there. So all of these statistics, they're inflated. And you know what I want to know? I want to know what are you doing for the teachers, the staff, the administration who are terrified and traumatized over the last two years, who are now taking over the last two years, who are now taking their terror and putting it on our kids? I have got my kids coming home telling me about this teacher, that teacher, the next teacher. All they do is tell me, pull my mask up, Mom, pull my mask up. I don't want to get sick. I'm scared. You're going to make me sick. Why the heck are these teachers and staff putting that crap on our kids? Like, our kids haven't been traumatized enough for the last two years? Muzzled in their classroom, can't talk to their friends, can't look at their friends, can't eat with their friends, can't anything. But oh, when we leave the school grounds, oh, who cares? Everybody just does. It's a free-for-all, right? Theatrics. That's all this is. All for what? For money? Well, I'm sorry. Why is it that a majority of, like, you know, if we're talking science, then why are the red states actually living their lives but the blue states aren't? Are the germs different in blue states versus red states? I'm sorry, can somebody answer that for me? I'm sure you won't, but, you know, just curious. Because this isn't political, right? It's science. So there were states, red states, that got ESSER funding. They didn't have what you guys put on your site. I had it right there. Universal masking. Well, guess what? Those people still got money, money, money. Because that's what this is all about, right? Money. You sign a deal with the devil and you put our kids on the frickin' chopping block for it. And that's baloney. And that's fine. I will wrap up. I have one more thing to say. My daughter's science teacher was handing out Band-Aids to the kids to stick on their nose for the masks to stay on their noses. Asked my daughter, would you like one? And thankfully, my daughter is like me, and she looked at her science teacher, seventh grade, and said, no, I feel like breathing today, thanks. That's the crap going on in the schools. So why don't you do something to help these teachers?
Thank you.
Only 16 things for that mask right now.
I'm going to ban away it.
Maybe I'll turn the time yet until I get it set up. All right. So first, I'd like to say that while we're here and we're livestreamed on YouTube opposed to Connecticut Network where we were last time, there's a rerun of a Board of Pardons meeting from early January on Connecticut Network being streamed right now. So it's your failure that we're not being seen on Connecticut Network when they're playing a rerun of a previous board meeting. That's unacceptable. We should be on TV right now. Instead, people got to find us on YouTube. That's what I want to say at first. All right. So maybe visual graphs will help you guys out. This is the Connecticut positive cases for COVID since the beginning of this, two years ago, okay? This is the cases. I'd love to show people at home, but we don't have the opportunity today with the setup. This is our current state of positive cases, right? This is last winter, okay? I'm not going to argue. I don't think the tests are perfect, but let's just go with the data we have. A lot more cases, way more cases. This is the fatality rate in Connecticut over the whole time period. That's spring 2020 on the far left. That's winter last year. That's currently. Far more cases, far by magnitude less death. So the hysteria that's almost higher today than it was at any point during this with people in driving lines to pick up masks and tests. People at home, and you guys, please, you have to check yourself and think critically. Is my level of fear rational at this point? Or is it based out of perception? Are you living in reality? Or are you living on a perception of reality that we're being shoved every day in the media to be in fear? Okay? You see, I can leave these here for you. I'd love to show people at home. And this isn't my data. This is Connecticut data. It's posted on New York Times. This is the fatality by age group. Far right is that older you go, 70s and 80s. That's far left is the younger you go. To date, zero to 18 years of age, there's been five children that have passed away credited to COVID. Five kids. Now, I would go out on a limb and say those five kids probably had cancer or some serious health, you know, long-term disease. Five kids. 80 is, 80 and up is far higher. I want to be an adult here and just let you know. That's kind of when we die, or 80s and 90s, right? That's a fact. Well, you could be adults, right? Not everybody's going to make it to 100 like Betty White. God bless her soul. So listen, check your hysteria and look at the data yourself. I didn't make these graphs. These are public. But moving on.
You've got about two seconds.
All right. If I could, I'd like to take somebody else's time here that doesn't want to speak.
I'm happy to do that.
We have 10 people here versus 30 last time. I think that's fair. All right. You guys need to get involved with something going on in the North Tuck Valley. Griffin Health, Griffin Hospital in Derby is set to have host sponsor a Harlem Wizards basketball game for schoolchildren to attend free of charge for Derby and Ansonia children. That sounds nice, right? Five to 11, five to 10, elementary age. Vaccinated only. Vaccinated only. 12% of Ansonia kids in that age group are vaccinated. 80% right now are not going to be able to go to. It's a one-hour event that's requiring masks, and they can't go because they're not vaccinated, but they're in school eight hours a day with a mask on for five days a week. And they're being told, you can't come and enjoy this show because you're not vaccinated. Where's my chart here? Five kids. How many kids in Ansonia have died for Derby from COVID?
Your time is up.
You need to get involved because the schools are involved in vetting who's vaccinated or not. Discrimination, you need to shut that down.
I'm going to be reading for a letter from Betty. If that's okay.
She's a teacher.
Okay. First off, I'd like to just say really quick.
Hold my microphone closer to you.
Oh, sure. My husband used to design masks for the UK military. And I will tell you right now, we actually have the signs and data on this. And if you'd like, I can email it to you. This is nothing more than a facial decoration. It's terrible. But anyway, okay. A letter from Betty. I'm proud to be an educator. I don't claim to be a doctor. There is a lot I don't know. But I spend my days with our youth and they tell me everything. I have the on-the-ground experience that you won't find in a textbook. I painfully know the burden they are carrying. I'm sick of the pushback by many credible people to minimize their pain. I want to share what I'm seeing and hearing. Our children believe that they are responsible for the outcome of this pandemic. They have internalized the shame and blame that was selfishly placed on them. They believe that if they remove their masks, they will be responsible for the death of another. They want to be told that they can take it off, that it is not harmful to do so. They want and deserve answers. Someone tell them that they are not responsible for this tragedy. The unvaccinated feel shame when others talk about their status. They look down and shrink in their seats. They watch me to see how I react. I remind them that the conversation isn't appropriate. I stress that I don't care. All are welcome in my class as they should always be. Many are angry. Those who did get vaccinated see very clearly that it amounted to nothing. They see that promises were made on behalf of their government, public health, and their parents that never came to fruition. A deep level of trust has been shattered, and it has destroyed them. They are lost. They are lost. Kids' identity is made up of their social interactions. When all sports clubs and friendships have been served, they wander aimlessly looking for something to hold on to. Often, they stumble into drugs, alcohol, or fall into deep depression with no way out. The level of hopelessness in our youth has reached its peak. They have verbalized that nobody is coming to save them, but they know they can't do this anymore. They have told me that they know I can't fix this, but that someone has to before they give up. After hearing them say, I can't fix this, I responded like every teacher should. Watch me. I am their voice because they are voiceless. We have taught our children that they don't matter when experts trivialize their pain and imagine what they are internalizing. But I'm an expert too. I'm an expert in connecting with youth and hearing their cries. They need normalcy immediately. History will not be kind to those who minimize their suffering and ignore their needs. I can go to bed at night knowing I tried. Can you? They all, sorry. They need to, I don't know what she's saying here. They need all the pomp and circumstance that they can being a kid. They need high-energy living and learning, no restrictions, no mandates, no darkness. Our children need life on the highest volume. They need it now. This is not their burden. They are broken. Fix this. I'll wrap it up really quickly. My daughter has, she wears glasses and she's in second grade. And this has been like an ongoing struggle because she fogs up all day, every day. She's a year behind in reading. She hates going to school and cries every morning. And all she wants to do is take her mask off, and her teacher yells at her constantly. It's awful. It's really sad. Anyway, that's it. Tom Stringfellow.
Good morning. Tom Stringfellow, Manchester, Connecticut. It's been a while since I've been back here as a guest because of the COVID. But I want to congratulate Dr. Tucker Russell for being the Commissioner of Education and other staff members. I think you're doing a good job. I'll speak on COVID secondly, but I just want to go through real quick. Dr. King's holiday, I guess it's like the 36th year that it's been into law. I want to recommend a book, Schoolhouse Burning: Public Education in the Soul American Democracy, because it has been pushed back over the years to go, you know, for, I mean, school vouchers or private sector can do it better. And that's, you know, mixed results on that. And I think he wanted to look forward to equal education for all students. It doesn't always work out that way because this is simply still a poor state in the nation, and it's abominable. Going back to Native American history, I want to recommend a book, All the Real Indians Have Died Off. It came out in 2016 by Roxanne Dunbar Ortiz and another author. It just deals with myths about business tribes, you know, dealing with casinos and other issues. Very good book. Pearl Harbor was 80 years ago last month. And I want to recommend National Geographic. There's been other books and other magazines about it because that was the beginning of World War I. But what we did to Japanese Americans was terrible in the internment camps and the racism that still occurred. My late father fought in that conflict and was never should forget it. We fought against fascism, but we had racism at home back then and still today. Some things have changed for the better. Three books I wanted to recommend. Well, I know critical race theory has been in the news recently, and I want to recommend this book, a third edition by Richard Delgado. It's very good. Explains what it's about even through critics out there. Another one, Speaking of Race, How to Handle Anti-Racist Conversations That Bring Us Together, by Patricia Roberts Miller, just came out within the last year. And knowing our history through American archaeology, you know, beginnings of our land and how you see it, why we judge others and the way we talk and the cost of biases. And I want to deal with the COVID, set it straight. Where the parents are in favor of masks? It's like one-sided, a seat predominantly white of suburbanites. But even though I don't have children by choice, but my safety is important to help and strength. And they may not like the rules, but stop using Marx's words. This isn't going back to collectivism. And those who get this information from Fox News or the Right Wing dogma, it isn't always factual because our JI, local paper, reports on it every day. So what's out there? And secondly, Dr. Fauci and Governor Lamont respect their title. Yeah, you can laugh, but you know.
Will we please do the courteous thing?
You know, it is biased, but why don't you talk about childhood poverty and what happens in the home and violence in schools? These students are not getting along. So that's what you really need to do is stop some real problems and stop trying to stake the world.
Tom, your time is up.
Okay. Just work together as Americans. And I have a right to my freedom of speech. You don't like it too bad. Free country.
Bretland.
I couldn't hear a word you said, by the way. So that's what our children hear under those masks. I was trying to hear you.
Good morning. I'm here to urge you to leave the decision on masking students to individual school districts, if not individual families. It is now being widely acknowledged that cloth masks are, quote, "little more than facial decorations that have no place in light of Omicron." Those words are Dr. Leanna Chant, a CNN medical analyst. If you want to hear something from an even more so-called credible source, the CDC writes, "Surgical masks do not provide the wearer with a reliable level of protection from inhaling smaller airborne particles and are not considered respiratory protection." Yes. The coronavirus is a respiratory virus. So why are children still being forced to wear them in schools? Especially when the vast majority of children are nearly unaffected by the coronavirus itself? Now, it's true. Hospitalization of children with COVID is up. However, a nurse recently confessed to me that the children admitted to her hospital for COVID are there with high fevers and simply need IV fluids. They are not all on ventilators, which is great. Now, I did see that you and the DPH have clarified that KN95s and N95s that are being handed out at schools are not for students. But I did some research last week when they were being handed out to students, and there are some things we should all consider. From the CDC, 60% of KN95 masks in the United States are counterfeit and do not meet national standards. For multiple sources, including OSHA, N95s are single-use and should be disposed of after each use. In a hospital setting, a healthcare worker needs a different N95 for each patient they see. At my spouse's school, they were told that they can use one for two to five days in a row. Also from the CDC, fit testing, a process that utilizes specialized equipment, is the best way to determine if an N95 fits you. This should be a big concern for those students and their household members who actually have compromised immune systems because I haven't seen anything about fit testing for those school staff members who are getting free N95s. Handing out N95s without providing access to proper fit testing is reckless. Will you then take responsibility when COVID inevitably continues to spread because these masks are letting the virus through due to poor fit? Regarding N95s and KN95s, the CDC also writes, "Do not wear if it is hard to breathe." Why should it be different in any other type of mask? One final note from the CDC. Shockingly, they recommend universal indoor masking for all persons in K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status or transmission rates. So if you have a 100% vaccination rate or the transmission rate in your town is half a percent, everyone in a school building should still mask up forever. Why? Do you believe this? I'm going to quickly finish up. Please stop mandating that our children wear a facial decoration or surgical mask that cannot by its very design keep out respiratory viruses, but instead inhibits their academic and emotional learning and development. By mandating masks in schools, you've effectively made it your job to keep students healthy. I suggest you stop trying to control a virus that doesn't harm the vast majority of children anyway, and instead spend your time figuring out how to meaningfully teach students about the dangers of weapons and drugs. Because I haven't seen COVID kill any Connecticut students, but we were all horrified by the death of the 13-year-old who injected fentanyl at a sport and medical sciences academy. You want to make it your job to protect students? Start doing something about the real dangers. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Meredith Nielsen.
My name is Meredith Nielsen. I'm a Cheshire resident and mother of two teens. This is the first state-level Board of Education meeting I have attended. I felt compelled to address you as I have grown increasingly unhappy with the way this state and its education system have been operating. As I'm sure you are aware, parents across the state have been attending meetings through their local education boards, begging them to free their students from masks and other social restrictions. I have heard testimonies from parents, nurses, and teachers, to name a few, presenting facts, data, studies, experiences, and a whole lot of common sense. It has all fallen on deaf ears. Why is that? In my personal experience, the board members claimed that all of these decisions were out of their hands as directives had been issued from the state. It's time to let the district have the control. Last August, I asked my board directly whether there was money, either received or lost, contingent on the following of mask-wearing and other protocols in the school. I was assured there was not. A few days ago, I learned about the ARP-ESR grant money through which Connecticut schools have received $1.1 billion, and I see that last year my own district should have received nearly $900,000 for following directives that included mask-wearing, social distancing, and pushing COVID jabs on the kids. What am I missing? It is reprehensible to me that federal bribes might be so readily accepted despite the fact that the protocols in place are not within the best interest of our children. These are discussions that need to happen in earnest within each district. My request of this board is that you advocate for all our students' well-being by insisting that decisions happen at the local level. Thank you.
My name is Jacqueline Flynn. I reside in Nagato, Connecticut, and I as well have two teenagers. This is my first State Board of Ed meeting, and I also have attended my local meetings and just felt it was fruitless. So here I am voicing my opinion and my thoughts to this board to see if people are actually listening and if we could make changes at local levels and at our state level to help our children. I would love some clarification on the COVID mandates for our children. They have been wearing ineffective masks for one and a half years, all day, every day. I want to know what has to happen for this policy to change? What is the end date on this? When does the money run dry or when does it tell us that our kids can be free? What are the metrics and what is the timeline to end this? Is it just when Governor Lamont says so through his executive powers? We now know that these masks are not stopping the spread, so what are we hoping for in terms of continuing to use them? Is there a stipulation in keeping these ESTER federal funds that universal masking needs to be upheld in our state? Other states seem to have been able to get around the stipulation. How and why are we still abiding by it? On another note, I am also deeply concerned about school and peer pressure, school pressure and peer pressure in conjunction with the COVID vaccinations. The messaging appears to be using overt false statements to peer-pressure children and parents to get the vaccine, as is stated on the Connecticut Department of Health on their Vax-to-School CT Toolkit for the districts to use. I also want to understand how the Department of Health and the CSE are working together to distribute that messaging that COVID, quote, "COVID vaccines are the most effective tool available to keep schools open and safe." I want to understand how that statement is being reiterated throughout our district. It doesn't make sense. The vaccine doesn't stop getting the virus, stop transmitting it, stop people from getting it. So how can we make that statement? And how could we force, well, force teachers and force students to be getting them? It is the Connecticut Board of Ed, is the Connecticut Board of Ed supportive of blatant lies being spewed that are promoted by local health departments? Sorry. The messaging starts with saying that vaccines are safe and effective at preventing COVID-19 disease. It's blatantly false, and we need to address that and stop forcing or promoting this to our children and segregating and discriminating against them wearing masks, not wearing masks, playing sports, not playing sports. Oh, you didn't get yours. Oh, you got your fake tattoo that says you got vaccinated. All the messaging that's going on is wrong, and it's blatant segregation to our children. I've been to, I said that, oh, sorry. You know, it always feels like these statements are on deaf ears. I really hope that people are paying attention, and there are many people that do feel like this but don't have the time to come out here. Please stand up for our children and respect parental and local choices. Parents should have the choice to mask and/or vaccinate our children without peer pressure. We need to use the logic that, and thinking skills again, instead of reiterating the mainstream media narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Please start final, a couple of participation, and then we'll go into the next session.
I'll move. Tom?
I'm up on my U.K. G train. Where are we going to start? I have a motion to resume our publishing question.
I'll move. Second.
That's in favor.
Aye.
The public has motion on minutes. Move.
Discussion.
Discussion. Favor. I'm opposed. Thank you. I don't think that.
Where are the commissioners?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Good, great to everyone. And I'm thinking, I probably should sit past here. I mean, I think, I think, but basically, you are, I'm sorry, in your substantial package, but I just want to highlight, pull out a few things for you, the trust month, the month that saw the agency event, continuing to work collaboratively, so many parts to keep our students faithfully learning personally. Few things to highlight for you as we learn, a little bit more later, as I'm sure you've heard that, I'm sure that the district staff, staff insured it, because it's something that we do not, and I'm sure you know, are about the impact of responsibility that you have pulled as a board from months ago, but we're continuing to work with this bottom one, trying to solve problems, uh, in the rest of the issue. It means, I mean, stakeholders, officers, the content groups, or board, and, you know, even partners, from, that's the same as a part of that conversation, that we can have in addition to even when, who tries to influence, because getting a student pool is really important to the impact on struggling for the, uh, leading for, and, and, that's, with the transportation, or, uh, more, you know, in our reports, but the distribution of test kits and masks to schools, and just to be known, I've been overseeing, partly, it's been doing not just for our public schools, but also for private, as well, to make sure that that is happening. Our ongoing efforts, getting to see, we need to get all stakeholders, and now, I will be, and besides the new rights that we developed and got out in December 34th, our first two that we need to report, was one that saw 860, so not to focus, you know, for that, to just get practical questions about the guidelines that we're putting through. Based on all the proposed, uh, information that we published in our third, some of this was national, but first we include, uh, that's a dash, so we continue to say, we're going on, to try and establish collaboration with emergency, public, uh, or public health, uh, with media, uh, with part of that union, and, 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 with, 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 with first, we started, uh, so they know, uh, what to point your nails to them, uh, John and Andy's team, uh, collaborating, and, and, uh, to that, to, 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 as well. I mentioned early about our two nurses, supervisors, bringing them together in their own state so they can, you know, calculate, underestimate, but specifically to, as supporting them, they can, uh, experts, along with, and, and, as well, and some of you may have seen the press conference yesterday with the governor, how they can use the manual part, and, and we had a press conference on the recent COVID, uh, as they, uh, voiced the medical science academy, and to talk about, again, how we worked to step down to support our district. And when we go on to court later, on, 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 it's a little bit about what we've learned and what we're trying to do for this, uh, in this space as well. Uh, the issue of attendance is one that continues to be, uh, a concern for us, as we get the monthly technical data, and our staff will want into unlearning, with the challenges, that continues to exist, uh, around students being able to take advantage of personal learning, uh, and support, and, 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 as well. We, we started our special population, uh, obviously, we're near, uh, that might itself facilitated for us, and these are partners and advocates to use specifically around these capabilities, uh, because we know that those are issues of concern as well, so that once again, they're answers to us, uh, we answer questions, uh, and we're also hearing from them what issues there may be that we should turn, how to problem solve those, uh, as we go forward. Legislation, uh, that would, the, that would find the, or, the standard, the center form, literacy, research, uh, and reading success, also has a legislation for convening the reading users implementing council, and, you know, organizing the first meeting last week, so the staff in the academic office, uh, is doing that for them as well. I'm sure with you and Laura shared a point definitely for meetings that we continue to have with legislators on what I would call in a brief kind of discussion, so you can answer their questions, let alone, you know, my implications. And I think those were very well received, uh, that they appreciated, uh, the tremendous product, the benefit, the true legislation, but more than anything else, that we are working to implement and to share with them, where we couldn't tell, we couldn't turn, but answering your questions, and, as I said, those have been, um, been very positive as well. You have information on, uh, the issue of mental health force and the initiative that I did, uh, WFC, to continue to talk about, by, 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 to go, to ensure that we have the initial of supporting every school building in our state. It makes a difference in different places, and in our agency report, we talk a little bit more about, uh, where we are in, in, in getting that space. The issue, uh, many of the issues that we've been given, uh, to, uh, they, you know, fungus, or, in, which, uh, the beginning of health, and so really important for us to be working, uh, in that space as well. And just finally, uh, internally, I begin and end of your staff meeting that we have in December, just to, to get everybody in one state, including our, certainly, our technical high school colleagues, uh, so that we can end the year, uh, get a really good meeting, and I have stayed in there, and, and I continue to, that, that's coming in, uh, when we're parked in the kind of a hybrid space, uh, when you don't see someone at the water cooler, or alcohol, going in the cafeteria, uh, making sure that their effort is, uh, is really important, and, 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 you should know that, finally, based on, uh, collective bargaining, that the state, at the state, is such that they employ, but for the most part, being a hybrid working situation. And so we have staff, uh, here at the agency that may, how we're working up to 80% of the time, uh, and that provides its own challenge for managing the hybrid workforce, uh, where our staff are working very hard to ensure that we take necessary steps to ensure that there's work in climate and culture, uh, when you're not spending time with your colleagues, very, very excited every day, but that is the reality, uh, and so we're working to make sure that that happens as well. That is, I report more than just the time, uh, in question.
Is that the hybrid thing permanent? Can be, can be, that's just because, that's, that's, can be a permanent.
So, thank you. Uh, the question is whether that was just related to the pandemic, just kind of where we started, uh, both through collective bargaining, that is, uh, the state of being, so, uh, uh, staff had to respect their schedule for the next six months, uh, based on, based on, I think.
I guess we'll, we'll, legislative proposal. Or?
Motion.
The motion first.
I'll move. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So we have four proposals for you this morning. The first is coming to us from our academic shop, and as you all may remember, last session, the legislature passed a requirement for the department to create a model K-8 curriculum, spanning all grades and all subjects. And the department fully supports doing this work, and our academic office is already fully engaged in doing this work. But we believe that we are not going to be able to meet the January 1, 2023 deadline for completing all of that work, especially in light of the very robust stakeholder engagement needed for this type of project, and so we are asking for a one-year extension.
Any questions, Senator?
All right, I can move on to the next. The next legislative proposal is actually going to be combined into one, the next two legislative proposals. They come to us from school nutrition, and this would simply allow the commissioner to modify the requirements of state statute pertaining to the Healthy Foods Initiative Grant Program, and the school breakfast grant program during a public health emergency to ensure that the grant funding can still be issued to participating school districts as intended by the original statute. And just as a matter of fact, there's 92% of districts that are participating in the Healthy Food Initiative and about 80 in the, um, school breakfast grant. If no one has any questions on that one, I move to our last proposal, which comes to us from our certification folks, and it includes two separate proposals. The first simply extends the professional educator certificate from five years to 10 years, and there is no cost associated to that certificate, so there will be no loss of revenue for the state, and it'll free up time in our certification office and eliminate burdens on educators. So just moving that from five to 10 years.
Straightforward. Any questions?
Okay. The second part of the proposal allows educators who have either the initial or the provisional teaching certificate to renew their current certificate under the eligibility and preparation requirements that were in effect when they were originally issued. It doesn't, in effect, it's not changing any of the, um, doesn't change any expectations or lower the bar for when they want to advance that certificate. It just allows them more time if they need it. Right now, currently, I believe with the initial certificate, you have up to five renewals, I think five one-year renewals, and then for the, getting the provisional to professional, it's eight years to do that. And so this will just extend those windows, if needed, to give folks a little bit more time to get where they need to advance the certificate.
Questions? I'll move. Okay. Do we have a motion on the table? Do we need for any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I do have one question, though, only because we've discussed it so much. It's that one about your proposal, but the remote learning, the remote learning that went into place last session that we've discussed at length about, that is due to start in September, but only for high school. Are we planning to do anything addressing that? I mean, we, we sort of had discussions on what a problem that's going to be if the legislation doesn't alter that from what they did last spring, or are you anticipating that we'll see that change?
The commissioner can correct me if I'm wrong, but the remote learning commission that was treated within the department is actually tasked, I think, with putting together a proposal on guidelines of what it would look like for high schools to do that remote option. Commissioner?
We're working on the standards, uh, that is part of the statute that would guide what would happen, uh, in, 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 that.
Okay. Because we've heard, you know, especially over the last couple of weeks about, you know, this remote, you know, allowing them to go reme-
As a fifty specifically around these difficulties. Uh, because we know that those are issues in terms as well as going to month again. Their answers to us, uh, the answer question, uh, and we're also hearing from them. What issues there may be that we should turn out to problem solve those as you go forward. Legislation, uh, that would see that would find the current standard, the central form literacy, research, uh, and reading success, also has a legislation for convening the reading users implementing council and organizing the first meeting last week. So the staff in the academic office, uh, is doing that for them as well. I share with you and Laurie shared a point of view for meetings that we continue to have with legislators, uh, on what I would call in a brief informal discussion. And we can answer their questions, let alone my implications. And I think those were very well received, uh, that they appreciated, uh, the tremendous brotherhood to better complete the true legislation, but more than anything else that we are working to implement and to share with them where we couldn't tell we couldn't turn, but answering your questions and the best that I can do, um, been, um, very positive as well. You have information on, uh, the issue of mental health force and the incident that I did, uh, W F S D to continue to talk about by all my big ideas to go to ensure that we have the need to support every building in our state. It means it's different in different places. And in our agency report, we'll talk a little bit more about, uh, where we are in board, uh, in getting that space. The issue, uh, um, many of the issues that we've been given in the stuff to do, uh, they you know, fungus or in which they don't have the beginning of help. And so really important for us to be working, uh, in that space as well. And just finally, uh, internally, I begin an end of year staff meeting that we have this December, just to get everybody in one space, including our, certainly our technical high school colleagues, uh, so that we can end the year, uh, get a really good meeting. I have stated that when we're in the community, and I continue to move staff that's coming in, uh, when we're parked in the center of a hybrid space, uh, when you don't see someone at the water pool or alcohol going into the cafeteria, uh, making sure that their effort to use that, uh, is really important. And I'm continuing to do it soon. You should know that finally, based on, uh, collective bargaining, that the state at the state is such that they employ those, for the most part, being a hybrid working situation. And so we have staff, uh, here at the agency that may tell us working up to eighty percent of the time, uh, and that provides its own challenge for managing the hybrid workforce, uh, whether that's a working very hard to be sure that you take necessary steps to ensure there's work in climate and culture, uh, when you're not spending that with your colleagues, very likely exciting them every day, but that is a reality, uh, and so we're working to make sure that that happens as well. That is, I report more than just a comment, uh, in question.
Is that the hybrid thing permanent? Or can be just first I like that just because it's dynamic. Can be a permanent.
So same to, uh, the question is whether that was just related to the pandemic, just kind of where we started, uh, both through collective bargaining, that is, uh, the state of being so, uh, uh, staff had to respect their schedule for the next six months, uh, based on, based on how you.
I guess we'll, uh, legislators focus. Or?
Motion.
A motion first.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So we have, um, four proposals for you this morning. Um, the first is coming to us from our academic shop. And as you all may remember, last session, the legislature, um, passed a requirement for the department to create a model K eight curriculum, um, spanning all grades and all subjects, uh, and the department fully supports doing this work and our academic office is already fully engaged in doing this work. Um, but we believe that we are not going to be able to meet the January one, twenty twenty three deadline for completing all of that work, especially in light of the very robust stakeholder engagement needed for this type of project. And so we are asking for a one-year extension.
Any questions?
All right, I can move on to the next. Um, the next legislative proposal is actually going to be combined into one, the next two legislative proposals. They come to us from school nutrition, and this would simply allow the commissioner to modify the requirements of state statute pertaining to the healthy foods initiative grant program, um, and the school breakfast grant program during a public health emergency to ensure that the grant funding can still be issued to participating school districts as intended by the original statute. And just as a, as a matter of fact, there's a ninety-two percent of districts that are participating in the healthy food initiative and about eighty in the, um, school breakfast grant. If no one has any questions on that one, I move to our last proposal, um, which comes to us from our certification folks, and it includes two separate proposals. The first simply extends the professional educator certificate from five years to ten years. And, um, there's no cost associated to that certificate, so there will be no loss of revenue for the state and, um, it'll free up time in our certification office, um, and eliminate, eliminates burdens on educators. So just moving that from five to ten years. Okay, the second part of the proposal allows educators who have either the initial or the provisional teaching certificate to renew their current certificate under the eligibility, eligibility and preparation requirements that were in effect when they were originally issued. Um, it doesn't, in effect, it's not changing any of the, um, doesn't change any expectations or lower the bar for when they want to advance that certificate. It just allows them more time if they need it. Right now, currently, I believe with the initial certificate, you have up to five renewals, uh, I think five one-year renewals. And then for the getting the provisional to professional, it's eight years to do that. And so this would just extend those windows if needed, um, to give folks a little bit more time to get where they need to advance the certificate.
Do we have a motion on the table? Do we need for any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, all?
Laura, I do have one question, though, um, only because we've discussed it so much. Um, it's that one about your proposal, but the remote learning, um, the remote learning that went into place last session that we've discussed at length about, um, that is due to start in September, but only for high school. Are we planning to do anything addressing that? I mean, we, we sort of had discussions on what a problem that's going to be if the legislation doesn't alter that from what they did last spring, or are you anticipating that we'll see that change?
The commissioner can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, the remote learning commission that was treated within the department is actually tasked, I think, with putting together a proposal on guidelines of what it would look like for high schools to do that remote option. Commissioner?
We're working on the standards, uh, that is part of the statute that would guide up what would happen, uh, in, in terms of implementing that.
Okay. Because we've heard, you know, especially over the last couple of weeks about, you know, this remote, you know, allowing them to go remote, and of course, that's not in our purview to allow anyone to go remote because of the legislation. But I'm wondering if that's something that should be looked at more closely as we enter this session in a couple of weeks.
I would guarantee that there will be discussions about remote learning in this coming session.
Okay, I would hope so, because if it stands the way it is now, it's not going to be pretty, but let's put it that way. So, all right, thank you.
I will keep you all posted.
Thank you.
We did.
So now we need a motion.
We have a motion for item six B, please.
Promote.
The second. Thank you.
Good morning.
Great.
Good morning. I'm here to give you about a month and a day in the community and I'm going to be trying to bring in diversity and awareness and she's had leadership for the purpose and career that I want to be to be part of, um, institution. The foreview is the annual report on the agricultural science and education priorities for graduate college twenty nineteen. The last I did report a big huge report review on the September twenty twenty one for the graduating classes twenty fourteen. The purpose of this annual report is to provide a view of the paper of education for the results of an annual study of the educational and educational industry that were graduated twenty nineteen by junior graduate graduation. The executive conference report provides the funding for this study's evaluation, and we are here and hoping to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'd be charred.
I certainly, I certainly want to thank you for the time and effort that goes into making this report and certainly am delighted to see the results that are coming out of the agri-science programs that we have. Uh, the, the recommendations are certainly very general. Was there anything else that, that you feel we need to, to be particularly aware of or that, that you feel that, that those of us that are working in the field of agriculture and natural resources can do to augment what happens at these agri-science schools?
Well, thank you so much. Um, I do echo your appreciation to the active down giving the school. This is a huge risk every year to contact those graduated a long ago, but every year they do it. And a special thank you to Howard Mac and Smart Department as well. Um, Cheryl does provide a lot of support, going to many meetings and, um, listening to the field and being welcome and doing the support of education. As you know, the board approves new standards, just a few years ago, um, that's the centers having been incorporating. Um, your support is always a lot of value if you ever want to go on a walkthrough, um, we can certainly set that up, um, and or continue the work. Just, I think the main part of it is communication and really letting stakeholders know what tool we have within the center. And before leaving parents and students and finding out about the center and the relationship.
No, thank you very much. I think one of the, here, I, I, um, work at the University of Connecticut for the agriculture, um, health and natural resources, our college. And one of the things that's come out of, you know, the amazing programs that we're starting to see really, you know, continue to, to grow is the fact that our employers, our state employers, agricultural employers are really asking us to work very closely with the agri-science schools, uh, because they do see the benefit of, of such a strong, a strong program. So again, many thanks for how you're, you're setting our young people up to be contributors to our state economic development.
Thank you.
Melissa, I would, I would love to take you up on a visit. I really would. I would love to see when it, when it's safe to do so, um, and, you know, comfortable enough for the school, I would love to see, um, one of the centers. I haven't been in one for many years.
Yeah, we can raise that, um, it definitely raised up for you. I know that the center will be clamoring over which one or how many, so thank you.
I'm sure some of my fellow board members would love to join me, so.
Any other questions that come in? Thank you. How do we, yes, we do need to vote. We have a motion, we've got a motion on, right?
Thank you for voting.
You want to call the law? Or we, no, we don't. All in favor?
Aye.
Item six B, report of the chair, the chair has, uh, not my seven, seven, sorry, the chair has another report. A quiet time, his grandchildren, his oldest grandchild is, uh, happily engaged in pre-K in the city school system at Hartford, and it's been a long time to say. Financial matters. No financial matters. Okay. We have the consent agenda, right? Have a motion for the consent agenda?
Alan, I'm removing, again, reminder, I'm removing C and D on the consent agenda.
We're moving, oh, okay, I thought we were removing them.
Removing them.
Yeah, okay, so, so the consent agenda is A and B.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The consent agenda is nine A and B, not, uh, nine including nine C.
I got, so C and D is removed.
Okay, the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May have a motion to approve for the, uh, nine C. Are we going to do those together, did you say?
Actually, they, I believe Sharon, they could be done together, don't you think? Yes.
Okay, so for nine C and D, put that on the.
Promote.
One minute, second.
Dr. Tucker.
Dr. Tucker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here with Sharon Fuller, who serves as liaison to the Council for Administrator Professional Standards and the Teacher Professional Standards Board, uh, to provide you with an update, uh, as to where we are with both of the, um, reports and the, and the councils.
Good morning, everyone. So you have in your packet, um, the annual reports from each of the two councils, the Connecticut Advisory Council, the Teacher Professional Standards, and the Connecticut Advisory Council for Administrator Professional Standards. Uh, each council meets by, by statute, uh, up to four times per year, and they have been doing that. This past year was my first year as the L E, S E liaison to both of those councils, um, with the retirement of our former colleague, Kim Wachelhausen. And what I noticed in both councils is they share some commonalities in that they both struggle with membership. Uh, membership is appointed by, um, some members by you, you recently have, um, appointed and reappointed some members. There's, um, different, um, appointees, uh, from the legislature, there's an appointee from the governor's office, from the union, but each council struggles with getting a full roster. But more importantly, they both share similar concerns for education. Um, so they, they are, both are currently addressing relevant issues. The Administrator Professional Standards Council is looking into, um, the needs for mentors for new administrators. Our Teacher Professional Standards Council has been looking into and researching, um, social and emotional learning. In fact, they have a council meeting tomorrow morning and they have some guest speakers to speak on that. Um, each year, their support, their report is submitted to you, our State Board of Education, as well as to the legislature.
The reason I brought this up and why I wanted it to be discussed is I know last, um, board meeting, we appointed new people to these advisory councils, and my first thought was, oh, this is great, it's going to finally move forward. For people who, um, are newer to the board, this has been an issue that has gone on for numerous, numerous years. And so when I saw this come through, I went in to see who all, who was serving on these committees. Um, to find that we are really where we were years ago. Um, one of the comm, advisory boards, out of seventeen, ten of them are either vacant or expired, and it was probably the same kind of status of that probably six years ago. One of them, eighteen members, of which fourteen are vacant or expired. I, my thought was that although the advisory serve a purpose and it is something that's in statute, it's not something we can just say, you know, maybe it's time that this moves along, it would have to be something that the legislation takes up, but it was put in in nineteen ninety. Um, and so my thought was with, you know, there's so much that is put on this agency year after year, that perhaps this is one that we go to and say, is it time for it to be dissolved? Because most of these vacancies are not ours. I mean, we, as you know, we voted those on last time. Many of the vacancies are from the legislation side, and if it's their statute, yet their vacancies are there, um, if you try to look for agendas or minutes, it's very difficult to find anything. I don't say that their work and their topics that they certainly cover aren't important, but if there are two advisory boards that basically are not even fifty percent filled, and this is, and this goes all the way back, I can remember Sarah Barzee going over this with us for quite some time during a board meeting years and years ago, um, that perhaps it's something that we look into, um, or at least combining the two advisory boards if the legislation is, you know, insisting that it goes on. But I do look at this as perhaps a, a place that where maybe we can look into really the purpose of this media, of these advisory boards moving forward. That's why I had, I wanted to discuss it, not simply just keep it on consent.
Chair Benham, may I just add a, a little historical context?
Sure, thank you, you're welcome.
Um, I was not a member of the S E back in the early nineties, but I was an educator. Um, and in the early nineties, that was a time in Connecticut when we were developing professional standards for both teachers and administrators. Um, in fact, I, um, the Common Core of Teaching was approved by the State Board of Ed in two thousand and ten, and the Connecticut School Leader Standards were approved by the State Board in two thousand and twelve. So that was, I, I, I believe that the Professional Standards Councils were very active at that time as it was a different era in Connecticut. I think we all agree that education has changed quite a bit since the early nineteen nineties, and I am happy to hear your suggestion perhaps of combining the councils, because I think in this day and age with the leadership of this agency, we are trying to be more collaborative, and, um, I have discussed this with Dr. Tucker and Chris Todd, um, that I think the impact of the co, there could be more impact of the councils if they work together on their, what their shared goals seem to be.
I agree. I, I definitely agree, and I, and I thank you for, I remember those, those times in the early nineties of why this probably came about, um, but I do agree. But I just think it's to continue just, you know, to vote these things in on compliance, I think it's, it's time we probably look at it and ask those need, I don't even sure who it is, but to look into this.
And, and I'd like to, um, thank Commissioner Russell Tucker, who did attend a joint meeting of both councils last May. She was helpful in getting some of the, um, vacant positions filled. Um, Commissioner Russell Tucker, I will be in touch with you. We, the councils are establishing a date in this coming May, so, um, you will be invited to that once I confirm the date, but I wanted to give a, a thanks to Commissioner for her support in establishing or getting some of the appointees.
Thank you.
I, I did note that the appointment from the, uh, State Board or Department of Education was one of the vacancies. The State Board of Education, so obviously we can do something about that if.
Yes, and, and, um, so you did appoint one member of the Connecticut, um, Advisory Council for Administrator Professional Standards, the position that remain, and that, that person represents higher education for administrators, um, the position that's vacant should be someone representing business and industry.
And I'm not even sure of the process of how, you know, this is the statute, like, I don't know the process of trying to combine the two, but I think a discussion is needed. Um, if this is a legislative, you know, committees that were put forward, you know, over thirty years ago, that they really need at this point either to decide if this is something want to continue to do, and if that's the case, then why the vacancies?
Thank you. We will work with, uh, Ms. Stefan to find which venue or avenue we need to take for, for that to happen and report back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, um, I, I did, um, like I said, I had talked with Dr. Tucker and, and Chris Todd, um, back in the summer and even with, um, Ms. Stefan a little, a little bit about the possibility of combining the councils. And, um, I, I believe there is growing support from members of both councils to do so. Um, so I, I think that that is something worth exploring.
That's good. I, I would imagine, that's good to hear. I would imagine that would be the case, and then perhaps it would be something that is productive. Thanks so much.
Chair Taylor, if I may, I just would like to acknowledge that, uh, for your consent A and B, we do have Dean Laurie Grup here from Fairfield, uh, University, and we also had, uh, Dr. Heggetis here earlier from Southern Connecticut State, but he had to leave.
Just a motion about on the consent agenda? Do you have a motion coming in?
We'll vote you on C and D.
Okay, let's see, so the consent agenda, nine C and D, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
If you can get the hard point set up and staff are going to talk into the fifty, you have the, um, all right, so the, we will address in some health and safety update on your five-year plan, uh, special education, you can be completely make sure that, uh, you know, we're not doing that today, some comments on S and Z for you. Um, a little more context on the staff, ensure that it's a moment we're doing and then from our legislature. So we'll get started, uh, in the house of fifty.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, as the Commissioner mentioned, uh, we issued with, in conjunction with D P H, issued new guidance, uh, related to quarantine, isolation and testing for schools. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention came out with new guidance on December twenty seventh, very nice of them, uh, and we worked with D P H over the course of that week to update our guidance for schools. Um, you are, you all are in possession of that, the, the guidance itself went out, uh, to districts on, uh, New Year's Eve, and we subsequently created, um, a frequently asked questions document that went out, uh, in, at the beginning of January as well. Um, a number, a number of changes, I won't get into the number of days and all of that, um, but one of the, one of the major things that changed is, um, suggesting that school districts didn't need to do the contact tracing that they that school districts didn't need to do the contact tracing that they had been doing. As we, over the course of the pandemic, we were finding, number one, that there wasn't transmission happening in schools largely. And even those students who were quarantining as a result of being in close contact were not testing positive. So the amount of effort that was going into that contact tracing, given all of the work that school nurses have to do, we felt that, given those circumstances, it was better for those school nurses and school nurse supervisors to use the resources that they had to identify those who were positive and isolate them as quickly as possible from the school. Some updates on vaccinations. You can see the numbers continue to go up for five to eleven year olds, one hundred and nine thousand, thirty-nine percent. And those fully vaccinated, which is the best number to see going up. So those folks are fourteen days past their, their shot. So twenty-eight percent of five to eleven year olds are vaccinated. We're up to six hundred and forty-eight clinics that have been scheduled. Not all of those are at schools, but that is also up from about four hundred and seventy in the prior month. And we continue to see some great numbers in our vaccinations of our students aged twelve to seventeen. Next slide. I want to acknowledge the work of Ajit Gopalakrishnan and Eric Scoville. Eric's not here this morning, so I'm doing the report for him. Ajit, as you can imagine, crunched all the numbers to determine which areas of the state needed which tests based on their student enrollment and staffing. And these are the distributions as of December thirty first. I believe that one point four million are actually tests, is that correct? Not test kits? So the test kit contains two, actually two tests. Every kit contains two tests. But that's one point four million is, is actually the number of tests rather than the number of test kits. And then you can see the numbers distributed to early childhood providers and bus drivers as well. Incidentally, these are provided to both public and private schools. We also distributed five million and ninety-five masks. And again, prioritized for schools and first responders. The second distribution of four hundred and twenty-two thousand and, and ninety-five masks. I know there was some conversation this morning from some of our folks here for the public comment about the CDC suggesting that cloth masks are not effective. DPH has always said that, number one, the mask that is the most effective is the one that a student will wear consistently and correctly over the nose and mouth for the longest period of time. Number two, the, the way in which COVID nineteen is transmitted is largely, largely through large respiratory droplets rather than aerosolized droplets. And DPH has indicated that cloth masks, layered masks, surgical masks are all effective at preventing those large droplets from being transmitted beyond the mask. A little on child nutrition programs. We continue to see really high numbers of meals being served. Interesting that, that November meals actually were on par with October meals, even though we had a couple of less serving days because of the holiday. But year to date, schools have received over ninety-two million dollars in reimbursements and are just, especially given the supply chain challenges, the number of meals are just, are really just, really, they're just doing a heroic job. The, the reimbursements this year, based on the, some of the federal waivers are higher than normal. That's why you see some of the higher reimbursements. But as you can imagine, the record number of meals has impacted the supply chain. If you've been in a grocery store recently, you'll, you'll notice that some of your favorite items are very often not there. Maybe even your second choice items are not there. And so you can well imagine that even though there is a specific market for school products based on the requirements for meals, they are facing some of the same issues. And some of those issues are certainly not just related to food production or food availability. The shortage in truck drivers certainly is impacting their ability to get food, also impacting their ability to get parts for equipment that they need to drive, to create some of the food. So a number of issues there, increasing costs of food. And again, challenges with getting exactly what they do. So, so what they've been doing are a lot, we've been allowing certainly substitutions in meals. Districts are now, I just talked to Hartford this morning, and she's already ordering in May just to make sure that she's got enough of what she needs. Also, like waiting to menu items until they're actually in inventory, so they don't have to continue to change menus. Substituting, you know, frozen fruits and vegetables for, for fresh and things like that. So they're being very creative with what they have, but the meals are going out and the meals are meeting the meal pattern and students are consuming them. So that's exciting. With regard to additional support for schools, we will be issuing, we have nine million dollars as part of a federal allotment for supports for schools due to the supply chain issues. Each district will get a base num, base amount of five thousand dollars. And then we'll get additional funds based on their, based on their enrollment. So the larger districts will obviously get a, a larger portion of that. But the base is five, five thousand for all schools that are participating. Okay, last. Another award through the American Rescue Plan was for homeless children and youth funds. Our plan, the state plan that was submitted in December was received US Department of Education approval. And this will focus, the funding will focus on McKinney Vento eligible students. So students experiencing homelessness, students experiencing unstable housing. And it's important that this will help identify students who may have, not have been in an unstable housing situation, but may find themselves due to the economic issues in, in that, in a homeless situation or an unstable housing situation to ensure that they have wraparound services. And the big one is the federal government requires that, that students are immediately enrolled and immediately able to participate in school without restriction. So this is additional funding to our usual award of, we usually get about six hundred thousand dollars that we issue to twenty different districts on a competitive basis. So we are in the process of issuing four point one million dollars to a hundred and twenty-three districts who opted in for that immediate entitlement funding, thanks to Kathy and her team who are helping us process those for districts. You might say, why only a hundred and twenty-three districts? You had to meet a threshold of, it's based on your Title One designation as well as the number of homeless students that, that are identified in your district. And you had to meet a threshold of, to meet five thousand dollars. It had to be five thousand dollars or you didn't. So many of the awards were actually less than five thousand dollars. There, in one, one district was like a couple of hundred dollars. So in some cases, it just was, they, they have money that they can use for those purposes that they don't need that money. So we're reallocating that money to the hundred and twenty-three districts that are asking for it and where the greater need is, so that all of that four point one million dollars will be utilized. And then we will be issuing competitive funding combined with our McKinney Vento funding annually or an additional one point three million dollars that districts can apply separately for on a competitive basis.
So, John, before you move into, I'm just going to ask you to, I, I, I'm not sure if I could do justice to, when John mentioned upfront, it's the thanks to the, the traffic load guidance, the people who are trying to take some time off. But just to let this board know that if there are staff who were trying to take some time off that we literally came back into work just so that we could be prepared for the beginning of school to have the guidance done. The same is true for calculating allocations and just getting that done so we can get delivery. I mean, really, folks literally came back into work. And as they're probably beginning to get the guidance ready and done and get allocations done for delivery to be done, homeless, deputy, Office of the Governor, emergency services, unified command, many times for deputy, that happens like that entirely. And I just want to say on behalf of, you know, that folks did this because it was so critical for us to be able to get our kids back into in-person, safely, for the beginning of school. And so, hats off, I just, I can't tell you what it, what it was like. Twenty-four seven, getting these guidance out on December thirty first, yes, December thirty first. Getting partners, even some of them traveling on vacation. Literally, one person was out of a restaurant. Getting those guidance with us so we could be ready to do that. I'm saying this even for those watching, because that's what it took, because folks cared to make sure that our kids were able to be back in school. Basically, I just wanted to report to you all that I so appreciate the staff who literally gave up family time, the time that they had, so we could do this. I, 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 I wish there was something else I could do to share that for you by just my, my profound appreciation for all the effort that was being given to the staff. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Commissioner. On behalf of the staff, all of us were.
And before you vote, John, I just wanted to talk a little bit about S D L, the social emotional mental health support that we're working with across agency and the pilots that have been trying to rely.
Oh, sure. So the Commissioner's, big audacious goal is to ensure that all schools have behavioral supports for all children. So we are working across agencies. We've been working with all of our state agency partners as well as Connecticut Children's to help us roll out a pilot program in a, in a half a dozen districts to create, to look at what their needs are in terms of behavioral health supports, whether they have in-house supports, but they need community-based support, whether they ha, whether they don't have in-house support. We've chosen districts that, that we will be able to learn and, and take what we've learned and scale that up across the state. But that is, what we're, what we're, what we're working on right now is to roll that out to ensure that those, that those programs can be piloted and we can, and we can roll those up so that, so that we can utilize the resources that we have now under A R P, thinking about the resources that will be, need to be available in the next couple of years after the American Rescue Plan sunsets. We're talking to our Medicaid partners about funding some of that work. We're talking to our Office of Healthcare Access to talk about private funding for some of that. Legislators are very interested in continuation funding with this. So this will set the stage to be able to create what we've all been working toward in the last ten years about a, a behavioral health support system and a mental health support system, community and school that can, that has the capacity to serve all of the needs of all of our students and all of our staff.
Thank you, John and Laura. I think you might have already done that. We did an association committee here on your kids' health with all our major agents and the PowerPoint deck, that particular deck. And it is the breakdown of the, our test are funded by category, including social health support. And so we need to have that, I think Laura, that that's to your box, you're ready. So you have that information and we'll continue to provide you updates as that work goes forward.
Thank you. Questioned out, earlier we've heard.
I'm knocking to the mic.
Yeah. This is better?
Yes.
I am projecting my voice. So earlier we heard from the Commissioner's report that, that, the chronic absentee. So how does, how did this impact the, the child nutrition? Were, were meals distributed in the communities for the kids or?
If a student, for our programs that are participating in the National School Lunch Program, which actually on the district level is really all but maybe a dozen districts, that if the child is learning remotely, if the child is in quarantine or learning remotely because of COVID, then, then schools provide those meals. They provide either delivery or pickup for those meals. And they can even include bulk meals so that a family can pick up a week's worth of meals on one day if the child's going to be out for a week.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I want to thank you for getting on the record the efficacy and efficacy of the protection mask. To clarify, and thank you for.
Comments or questions?
All right. Thank you, John. And I think, uh, uh, to update on the New Year's budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, if I'm projecting too much, I apologize. I used to have my microphone in front of me. And hello to everyone and Happy New Year. I haven't seen you since the year started. Our five-year plan for the State Board is moving along. We are contracting with the RESC Alliance to complete the plan and that contract is nearing completion. At Advance, we'll be spearheading the plan development, having worked on the last five-year plan and they're very anxious to get started and are already in the planning stages internally. This work will be completed in approximately one year and will include meeting with the board to review the goals of the plan, which I believe will be happening at the February meeting in a few weeks. So we will get, hit the ground running. They will be conducting focus groups and surveys of various constituent groups for further input. They'll be drafting a summary report to the Commissioner and the board. And then they will be incorporating feedback into the final report from feedback that has garnered, been garnered from you, from the Commissioner. And this will be presented to the Commissioner by February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three in preparation for board approval at the next meeting. And that's where we are. You will see me again in a few weeks when I introduce the individual from At Advance who will be leading this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Russell, let me, for company, we just understand the schedule for you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair Taylor and board, nice to see you. Good afternoon. Just wanted to communicate my excitement now that we're less than six months away from the implementation of our statewide special education system, C T S. We have twenty pilot districts that actually this week started training to be able to engage in that pilot. So very exciting work. We are also training observers of those sessions. So our partners from CERC as well as the RESC Alliance will be supporting our districts as they go through and test the system and give us valuable feedback on how we can make improvements between now and that rollout on July one. Over the summer, the districts will be identifying expert trainers that will help support each of the school buildings within the district. So that's the model we have. And we also have resources that will be recorded and accessible for each aspect of the system so that the users will be able to do the necessary work to support special education process as well as five oh four and other related data collections. I did want to mention our Special Education Data Application Collection Process, or C D A C. This work has, we've been engaged in reviewing each and every individual education program across the state and looking at compliance related there within annual reviews to ensure that they're being held within a year, our reevaluations that are being conducted and performed in a timely basis. The districts have made substantial improvement and progress since the previous data collection point, but we still have areas of non-compliance. We find those and then we work with districts to help correct those and ensure that the meetings take place in a timely manner, including the parents or adult students that are involved in that process. So I just wanted to thank our partners in the Performance Office for their work around this and the collaboration with our support and monitoring team for districts. Just a real brief update on the S R two activities related to special education. As you know, there were sixteen million dollars that was allocated toward special education in that umbrella and concept around recovery. Those applications have all been reviewed and a majority have been approved. There's only a few districts that are working on slight adjustments or edits to those applications. So the good work is happening currently. And that's happening within their I D A, additional allocation, as well as in those recovery areas. We're excited to see that work happening. We also followed up with the districts with a survey just to understand the percentage of students that are being impacted so that we can allocate our supports and resources to those districts. Finally, the last previous few special education updates, I've talked to you about our S P P A P R process, stakeholder process, which we've engaged in from August through February. So coming up next month is our final submission. And I just wanted to share our website and give kudos to Matt Falconer from our Communications Office for setting. office for setting this wonderful resource up. This is an overview of our process, which is nicely laid out in one page in our section. We have a recorded nine-minute video for all stakeholders just to understand the process that we've engaged in. Uh, additionally, you can see we're still collecting input on the various groups of indicators, um, around, uh, preparing students for life after high school, performance in key areas. So all of the required 17 indicators were grouped and we've been collecting information from parents, educators, advocates, anyone that's interested in the, um, improving outcomes for results of students with special needs. On the bottom, you can see we've also received input from the youth advisory group, um, CPAC leadership, which, um, we held parent sessions for Spanish and English speaking parents, as well as we've engaged with our commissioners' network for family engagement, uh, which they've been great, um, valuable participants. So I can't thank the stakeholders enough for the valuable information that we received to be able to inform our, um, plan, which will be submitted to the Office of Special Education Programs, um, next month. Happy to answer any questions on any of those topics or provide additional information if needed.
So it's, it's unheard you say that the application, application review right there. Yes, absolutely. Uh, so when are they expected to initiate the project?
When, could you repeat that?
It's reading application review up there, right?
Yes.
I'd like to know when would the, uh, the applicants know that they were awarded?
They find out real time. So as, so as I mentioned, for the I D A, ARP additional funds as well as the S R activities, as soon as they're approved on our fiscal end, the district gets a notification through our, uh, electronic grant management system and are able to start to draw down those funds. And a majority of our districts and applications have been approved. Um, I mentioned there's only a, a couple of districts that are working on edits based on our feedback at this point in time. It's a great system that the districts get real-time information on when that application is approved.
And we're looking forward to hearing some of the results.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just to see what, what was successful for the state of our communities.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before, um, Dr. Tucker joins, uh, I just wanted to update you on, uh, maybe to have Kathy a little bit of this conversation. Uh, on the next slide, you will consider a new education funding formula study, connected by the Office of Fiscal Analysis, and Kathy will tell us a little bit more about it, how you can actually increase critical.
It's just a little, it's a little light reading. Good afternoon, uh, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair, uh, Benham and board members. Um, as Commissioner said, it during the most recent budget session, uh, as part of Public Act 21 dash two, there was a requirement that the Office of Fiscal Analysis conduct an independent modeling of an education funding proposal that had been brought out, um, under Senate Bill 948. And so over the course of the last six months, uh, the Office of Fiscal Analysis, which is the legislative, uh, budget office, has been working with my staff, uh, to develop that model. Um, as you can imagine, it went through various iterations. The funding model would change how ECS, or the Education Cost Sharing Grant funding, um, would be distributed, uh, on the state charter schools, magnet schools, our regional agricultural science and technology centers, and the open choice program. So it's very comprehensive. Um, the idea behind it was, uh, to create equity and to reduce the number of different formulas that were available. And I know this is something that we have talked about in the Legislative and Policy Committee now for several years. Um, so, uh, what I wanted to offer was, given that this is 80 pages and a lot of numbers, was that if the Legislative and Policy Committee would like, I'd be happy to come and, um, do a presentation on just what the potential impacts of the formula would be. Uh, the legislature, the report itself was due this past Friday, the 15th, um, to the legislature and it was submitted. The department did submit comments along, um, with that about the potential impacts, but I would be happy to come and, um, talk further about it and give you an opportunity to ask questions.
Kathy, could you shoot out a link to all of us?
Absolutely.
For the report?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we thought about it after a minute. Can you use the link? If you could take around the policy.
I can't figure out the microphone, but.
Cause it's really a camera.
Yes. A lot of work done to get the camera slash microphone in front of me. Um, I think that would be, uh, a nice thing for a follow-up for the years of conversation.
All right. So we will plan to do that. I will work with Mike for, um, in preparation for your next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Uh, next slide, would you update on Next Gen Advancing Program, Dr. Tucker, and also I'd ask her to just update you on how we've been, our staff, in shortage of support for our districts. I know they've been way busy, uh, trying to make sure that they're not lost at all and it's kind of a major issue that they're working through.
Thank you, Commissioner, and good afternoon, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Benham and board members. Uh, the, uh, C S D E had the pleasure, uh, during the month of December to celebrate the partnership between the University of St. Joseph and East Hartford, uh, public schools. They are launching or did launch in December a, a Next Gen program within East Hartford. They will be placing students within their E P P program at several of the schools within East Hartford. We also, uh, continue our work with East Hartford through Ed Rising. They are one of two sites within the state where we are focusing on developing more males and cultivating their interest into the field of education. So as one of our pilot sites, we've met with the young men in their program in which they have five. We've also met with the young men at our second pilot site, which is New Britain. They have six. So we're working with a total of 11 young men at this time. It's called the Men Initiative Male Educator Network. As part of that, we firmly believe in student voice because we want to ensure that we are meeting the students' needs through educators rising and what it is that we're offering. So the students have expressed when we met all of them virtually, which we wanted to do in person and we weren't able to do, some of their concerns or resources that they felt could help them as students or possibly pursuing this pathway. So we're working with our E P P programs who can help us to provide resources to our young people. For example, one of the, uh, concerns that they had was they wanted more information around higher order thinking skills. Can you help us with time management, organization, preparation to help us as we transition into college? So those are the, the types of feedback that they're providing to us. And we're working with our E P P partners such as U S J and others to provide them with those resources to be successful. Next Gen, I will just state that this past fall, we had 75 E P P students placed in eight districts within the state. We have a request from over 20 districts for placement. So the, the schools are now working on their placements for this semester now that students are just returning to campus. So we're looking to see what our numbers will be for this spring semester and for those placements within the district. So we continue to move forward, uh, with both of our programs. We do have some other initiatives that we're working on that you will hear about in the very near future. Um, also I'll just note that during that celebration, Vice Chair, uh, Benham joined us, but our own commissioner was also recognized during the partnership, uh, celebration as an alumnus of the University of St. Joseph. Regarding staffing shortages, we have, uh, as you're aware, we have several certification flexibilities that have been provided to our districts and our districts are taking advantage of what has been afforded to them. Uh, want to share some data with you. Uh, from July 2nd of 2021 through January 14th, last Friday, districts have taken advantage of the B A B S waivers and those are persons who do not hold bachelor's degrees requesting to be hired by districts as substitutes. We've processed 387. Long-term subpermits, persons with bachelors hired into a position for 40 days or longer, 247. D S A, candidates enrolled in ed prep programs authorized to serve as the teacher of record, 434, which is an increase of 30% from pre-pandemic levels. The emergency certification endorsements that the board approved in November of 2021, to date, we have processed nine emergency certs. We also work with our fellow agencies to ensure that processing of D C F and background checks are moving at a more rapid speed because sometimes that does take on average between three to six weeks. So the commissioner's working with her colleagues and our requests have been kind of fast-tracked and moved forward for them to be processed in a more timely manner and we do appreciate that. We are in communication with our two substitute vendors here within the state who work with and fill many of these subpositions within our various districts. So we have communication with them to ensure that we're meeting their needs. If there are information clarification that they need, we're providing that to them and also just to get a pulse check and a status check as to where they are with the work with the districts that they're doing. And last but not least, we do have districts that are taking advantage of the governor's executive order, trying to recruit retirees back into their districts. So again, our districts are taking advantage and are very appreciative of the flexibilities that have been afforded to them to assist them with staffing shortages. Any questions?
When somebody has been hired under the emergency order, what happens when the emergency order expires?
They then return to the, their original position that they were in.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. And you can see we have a rapid response in here, like their residue funding, uh, to all the calls that they're getting. It is, uh, extended from Friday. And I, I think, uh, Dr. Tucker's phone probably better than the call after, after that, ensuring the fact that folks are taking advantage of over 1,000, you know, uh, opportunities that folks are accessing to. So we're working with us to make sure that we can support our districts, uh, when we meet the ground and appreciate the effort. So thank you very much.
And the diversity, the compulsive diversity, cause I, uh, how is that? Your?
I couldn't hear you.
The, the composition of diversity.
Diversity in, in, in the, in the, um, in the workforce, in, in, when you bring them into the, to, uh, St. Joe at this point. Cause you mentioned New Britain and I'm curious
to know, what were those numbers?
Well, those are for our two pilot sites.
Mm-hmm.
And that's specific to Ed Rising for the young men. So we have five in East Hartford and we have six males in New Britain. So we're working with a very small cohort of 11 young men who are all high school students who have expressed an interest in pursuing education as a career pathway.
Are they young men of color?
They're all young men of color. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, they're all young men of color. Um, they are being paired with mentors right now and the mentors that they are being paired with are also men of color who are educators in various capacities. So whether they're teachers, administrators, assistant superintendents, we are pairing them with their mentors. We have collected data and information from both the mentor and the mentee to prepare the match for them, uh, as an additional resource, uh, for them. And I did fail to mention, we have two upcoming activities, both involving educators rising and our Next Gen program. On March 10th, we will be holding our statewide virtual, uh, Ed Rising competition. We held it last year. C C S U, uh, has sponsored that. They are allowing us to utilize their virtual platform. So that's March 10th. That will focus strictly on student competition. And then on April 27th, in collaboration with Quinnipiac University, they are opening their doors to us to host our education summit, which will be for all of our Ed Rising, uh, students who would like to participate from around the state. We will have, uh, a, a track for females and a track for males, uh, from various persons within the field of education, uh, continuing to cultivate that interest with our young people.
And I trust that it will build as we go along, especially for our males of color. Very important.
Yes, this is, this is the implementation phase of our grant year one. And so we're really taking it slow and trying to be very intentional about the work that we're doing, but at the same time, listening to the voice of the students to make sure we're meeting their needs. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Tucker, I just have a quick question. Um, with the, uh, with the governor coming out with the, the, uh, I guess the allowance of the retired teachers, is that something that goes through your office or directly through the district?
That goes directly to T R B.
Okay.
So the district will work directly with T R B and they are helping to field them through that process.
Okay. I had a few people question. They're very happy to see that because most do not, as you know, because of the penalty, but to lift that penalty in this time was a very smart move.
Yes. The only involvement that we have in the process is verification of the certification. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Um, the next slide. The recognition of Computer Science Education Week.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, this slide and the next slide highlight what we have done, um, as a department in supporting and highlighting Computer Science Education Week, which happens annually and featured here. We visited, uh, Webster Hill Elementary School and this young lady next to me was teaching me how to code and using her computational thinking skill. And you'll see that she's working out the coding to have her Azabat actually work. So it was very exciting. And while this was happening, there were other events happening, um, as featured on the next slide, where the commissioner, the governor and the lieutenant governor were out visiting different schools in the events that were happening to support our commitment to developing these skills, computational thinking skills with our students and computer science. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And my problem is that, Ajit, the next slide is the performance matter forum, uh, that occurred with a team person forum, uh, that they had, I think people were so happy to be in person, collaborating with each other, attended by over 320, uh, participants, uh, just as you know, annual, uh, meaning that, uh, if you, uh, success, uh, love passing data and performance, uh, and so hopefully we can stay together. Uh, this is also occurring, uh, with our own state board of education members, uh, with the, uh, middle school, had a event, uh, that I think we've implemented, uh, which was great. And you mentioned you coming in and just talked about the performance matter forum, which, uh, that you had and I understand that people were very happy just by you. And, uh, in recognition, I'd give information and the elementary school they made for, uh, that was the plan, uh, unique one, uh, that they were one of the two, uh, districts, uh, schools that were selected where the ornaments, uh, were on the smaller trees that were on the national Christmas tree. So, um, uh, showing that they were able to have that recognition and I think was when the governor went out and interviewed, uh, with that, with that as well. And finally, you know, the, the shout out, when I, when I did the shout out about a few minutes ago, I know John was sitting there. My shout out, however, was John and, uh, certainly other staff, uh, when, when I talked about the work that folks have done on quality T S D, if it's setting up the pot, if it's a museum, leading staff there, uh, own staff, um, you know, national bar and all those that were doing that work. And so they, the staff of the department and from a technical high school staff, the Todd, uh, to make sure everything runs smoothly. I know I've gotten the, uh, Eric was volunteering at some, we didn't, uh, so we didn't refer to do that, the staff to care of that. So between, you know, the office of the governor and D T H who actually, um, financed, uh, the kids that were purchased for students as a teacher, the national bar, uh, Strategic Services and Public Protection, uh, our unified command structure that I talked about, maybe everybody, uh, was working together over the voice of that. And I stopped, uh, in order to keep going in terms of what we're doing for, same personal learning source tool. And again, my thanks to everyone, uh, for all the hard work that they're, they're doing here. And of course, thank you for all of your support. We can send you everything we're sending out, hopefully within a pocket of your C box. So we wanted you to be aware that there is, you know, there are challenges, you know, actually not far as far. That is my report from the agency and thanks to everyone.
That's from, yeah.
Yes.
Academic standards.
Yeah, we, we made anywhere on last week, and I assume there's going to be a really boring conversation about the agreement. It was a very lively, exciting conversation by Eric G. and Boris Ivanovich, Benham. And we'll be meeting next week.
We met last month to review the toolkit, and, and it was a great review to see, you know, it was just, and I must add that, that it's great to see. It was, Accountability was one of the first committees I, I participated in when I first joined over seven years ago. And to see the extent in which this committee has grown is, is just fantastic. So it was a great time to review the toolkit, and we will be meeting, we're tentative schedules for February 10th.
So we last met on the report for a committee to go through the legislative proposals that we approved here earlier this morning. We will, we did not meet this morning, we will have a next meeting on the break.
Dr. Solak, can I give you an update?
Good afternoon, Chairman Taylor, Commissioner Russell Tucker, and members of the State Board of Education. It is indeed my pleasure to offer this brief report to you this afternoon regarding the CTEC's progress on lots of different projects. First and foremost, we continue work on our strategic operating plan. We are now surveying all eighteen CTEC's schools for their input. That includes all staff, administrators, and students. And the first draft of the plan will be reviewed with the CTEC's Board in March. We've also created a draft of the CTEC's separation plan and has been submitted for review and pending approval is slated to be presented to you at the February more, Board Meeting. I'm very pleased to announce that we have application rates coming in right now at an all-time high for our schools. Last year at this time, we had received approximately eight hundred and fifty applications. This year, to date, we have four thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine applications for CTEC schools.
Wow.
That is due in large part to the advertising publicity and support of CTEC staff and our CTEC's Board, in addition to the establishment of an electronic application system for the district, which has been hugely helpful for students and families to more easily access the application materials. I'm also pleased to announce that we have recently rolled out the CTEC Seal of Biliteracy for all schools. CTEC is one of the few Connecticut districts that will be directly involved with this valuable program, designed to enhance the opportunity for students to enter Connecticut's diverse workforce and/or colleges and universities with mastery of English and one other world language. So we are very excited about that initiative. And finally, it is also my pleasure to announce that we had a wonderful opportunity to meet with Secretary Cardona and Congressman Courtney last Friday. Both of them visited Brasso Tech down in Groton. In addition to the honor of being present, we also had Board Member Mr. Trufry present on that day. Also, Dr. Valerius was able to make it down, and we truly had a wonderful one-hour visit with both of those leaders. They are extremely supportive of Connecticut education, as we all know, and very much supportive of the technical schools, as Dr. Cardona is a graduate of Wilcox Tech. So that is my report for this afternoon. If I can answer any questions at this time, I'd be happy to do so.
And Lee was also, it was also, that's.
I put this at the end.
I have a question, which is, with a five hundred percent increase in applications, what's the process for selecting the student body?
Thank you for that question, Chairman Taylor. There is a, actually, a three-pronged process for reviewing the applications. There's an initial review to make sure that the applications are completed and meet minimum criteria, including academic performance, behavioral, and other standards. When the second prong comes available, that is a meeting with the students and parents to determine the level of interest in terms of pursuing a tech, technical education. In addition to that, students are asked to submit a sample of writing expressing their interests and desire to become a part of our technology schools initiative. And thirdly, students are interviewed as well to, again, have an opportunity to meet with us more directly and to determine their interests and skill and ability. And finally, they are invited to a shop night, which is an opportunity for them to explore all of the different shop areas, as well as academic offerings, to be sure that, that it is a good fit for them as they enter.
I like the fact that they get interviewed. Are there parent orientations before accepting the student?
I'm so sorry, I didn't hear the.
Are there parental, are there parental orientations before accepting the student?
Absolutely, yes. There is a parent, that shop night, parents attend as well as students. So that's one opportunity. In addition to that, upon student acceptance, parents are also invited to an open house, opportunity before students enter the program.
Beautiful. Well, good luck with your four thousand and over applicant.
It's good news.
What did you say, Beth?
It's good news.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a couple things to report on NASB. The first of the roundtable was last week. I'll report on that for Woody. They did review with the group that they will be holding legislation conference in March in Washington, DC. So you'll see information coming out about that. Dr. Tucker, you'll be interested to know, too, that they knew about the partnership between St. Joe's University, were very interesting on how Connecticut pulled that off. So a lot of inquiries came from, I believe, DC and Tennessee about that. So that was great to see. NASB also started, what they're going to hold is four roundtables for chairs and vice chairs, and I was able to attend this roundtable with Secretary Cardona. It was a nice meeting to, first of all, to, to see the Secretary again, but it was also, he, he started off the meeting with priorities that he felt were most important for state boards. And just quickly to go over that, it's nice to see that Connecticut has accomplished all of them. He went over that there should be definitely government engaged, the Governor being engaged in supporting of the agency, staff at the agency being increased, retired teachers should be able to teach without penalty, and hire, higher ed students supporting districts and ongoing, you know, becoming teachers. So it was nice to hear him talk about what he felt is the priorities and knowing that Connecticut fulfills all of them. So it was really nice to see. So those roundtables will take place. There'll be three more with the Secretary. So it was nice to have. That's a new part of the new president there. Let's see, I think I'm next, Juan. Cirque, yes. Cirque, I gave you the report. I do want to add also, at the very end, because we did have a discussion on this, you'll see the implementers being used for the Black and Puerto Rican Latino course. And just so that you're aware, all these implementers, I did question about the feedback, because we, we've heard that feedback does come back in. And so feedback comes in from the implementers and the teachers each quarter. They share, and they also share student artifacts at some time. And also, the feedback is part of the coaching support of this. So as you read the report, I just wanted to include that as well, that it is part of their coaching support, and that curriculum is moving along. And then Karen left me notes for remote learning. I met Karen. Remote Learning Commission met again in January to continue the progress on its charge of study and, on its study and present a feasibility plan for this, a plan for the establishment of K-12 remote learning school. During this month's meeting, we reviewed learnings from the presentations of other states' virtual school models. Working groups began their work, research and design-focused group development. We are progressing toward the report, a completion deadline of July 1. And that is the remote.
Well, I guess that's planning for permanent remote learning. Hey, I think that is the end of the agenda. Is there anything else that we need to raise? Looking to return?
No moves.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.